Hi, it's Jerry Roberts. Welcome back to another edition of Newsmakers Journal of the Plague Year. It is Sunday, October 4th, and today we are continuing our series of talks with the candidates for the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Education. And we are joined by incumbent Wendy Sims-Moten. Thank you so much for taking the time to speak with our viewers, Wendy. Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Jerry, for inviting me and looking forward to our conversation.
Well, let me ask you this first, and I kind of ask everybody this is, you know, being on the school board is terrible hours, the pay is lousy, and everybody's always mad at you. So why in the world would you want to be on the school board for another term?
Yeah, well, certainly, why not? Why not? That's where all the fun is and how we got even more attention as more folks are here in this race. And it's fun to be, you know, I know that's like strange, like, you know, academically, it's fun. I think it's good to make sure that's always that we have good engagement around the education of our students. And so why not be here where all the fun is and where all the great future is as well?
All right. So we have seven candidates who are competing, three incumbents who stepped up to run in four years ago, including yourself, 2016, but there were only three people running. So you took a board seat. You know, this is really the first time you're out talking to voters. Can you catch us up a little bit on your bio, on your background? Did you grow up in Santa Barbara? How'd you get here?
Yeah, you know, I got here a little over 30 years ago. I came by way of Texas in terms of that. And so understanding how education has always been a part and foundation of my family. So that's how I kind of travel essentially, you know, the foundation of certainly running for this board, you know, but coming from Texas and understanding, you know, the strong family foundation that I have, and I continue to have those values that lead me, you know, and guide me through decisions and, you know, conversations and that happen. And I've been out here now a little over 30 years, and it's been a good place to be able to be here. It is a different community in terms of the diversity that here, and you don't often see that diversity diverge upon each other, but you know, more and more it's beginning to do that. So I'm glad to be a part of this. I certainly raised my son. He came through the Santa Barbara Unified School District. So I understand it from a parent's perspective, from a community perspective, and you know, and how important it is for the community to be involved in our education system. Had my aunts and uncles, I had an aunt who was a teacher. So certainly, you know, I understand all of that coming to this, that I had that who loved music, who loved a lot of things. And I have my great, great grandparents, believe it or not, I had very, I knew them, and it wasn't just like, you know, sometimes at Christmas, you know, but I knew them intimately. And I had the great fortune of having a foundation of family. And, you know, when you see that movie Soul Food, that's really us having that dinner, my grandmother, you know, learning how to cook and how to treat folks and understand sometimes, and certainly understanding when to talk and when to listen, you know, and to have integrity and expectations that you will get there where you're trying to go and you're expected and you being accountable. So I learned all of that through being, through that Texas foundation of who I am, who I've, you know, also my husband and I, who instilled that in our son. And so, you know, integrity is really important, candidness, being honest, and more importantly, relationships are crucially important. So when you're having difficult conversations and different things, you always, there's a relationship there, and it doesn't get clouded and personal, you know, as opposed to staying on the issue. So.
So now you're the executive director of First Five, which focuses on the first five years of life. Why is First Five so important? Why is sort of pre-K education so important? And why is, what do you, what do you bring to the school board from that perspective?
Yeah, absolutely. First, I just want to make sure I have the best day job ever. Make sure we're working with our young folks. They can teach you a lot of things, right? And so you know how important it is those early years at early foundation, when you're starting to engage the brain, you're talking and reading and singing so that it gets engaged in that sense. And it's also that opportunity at a very early stage to engage parents and support them as their child's first teacher. How do we support them? How do we get them ready for, you know, for the K through 12 system? And what I hope to do is to make sure we better align the early care system with the K through 12 system, because then we'll be, the kids will be ready. They've already been engaged in reading and talking and singing, so they're ready to, you know, to take it on. It's not just grading, we're measuring it at third grade, we're measuring it when they get there, we start to measure it there and see how that carries on. And, you know, when you're really, I think I bring that, keep bringing that, because oftentimes you see me on the board talking about or hear me on the board now, talking about how important it is that we do not make our preschools or our kids zero to five, make them invisible. They are an integral part of us being a successful school district, right? Because we're starting stronger. And so certainly, we would do that and things that we'll have less intervention if we start stronger in identifying, you know, development or delays that may be going on, how we can support families, you know, with regards to that. So that's, that's what I bring. I bring that lens, and it will also have the opportunity to, it's early and it's a foundation. And I would go back to, I would call my porch, the early foundation, is that you have a strong foundation, and so it protects you further. You know, you're able to get further and able to move through and navigate through life because you have a good firm foundation of, you know, who you're beginning to become and how you understand and how you interact with others.
Yeah. And you talked about measure, measurables and measuring things. And obviously, assessment is a huge part of the entire education system. As, you know, an incumbent, and obviously, you know, you're taking a lot of criticism from the challengers. It's a, it's a political race. What is, how would you assess the board's performance in the four years you've been on there? What grade would you give to the school board?
Well, I would give this a B, because, you know, because we all want an absolute, you know, excellent in terms of that. I know there may be times during the time we made that B yet, you know, and a C plus in terms of grade, but I certainly would want that to be a who and our intentions and our, what we're trying to, you know, our goals for this district in terms of that. If you just need that grade, I would give it a B, I would give it a B, because we always want to be in position that we're moving and improving, you know, where we, where we need to go. And see sometimes it's averages, sometimes you have to figure out where I have to be, sometimes you have to figure out, you know, making sure that you take the time, right, to really assess where you are. And oftentimes, the data, sometimes, and we're hearing it now in this, and certainly want to embrace what others are seeing, right? And so it's important in terms of actions. So in terms of a C, it's, you know, the C plus, but I give this a B. And I think, because when you measure things, you can, you know, you don't use it as a weapon, like, oh my gosh, that's such a negative thing. But rather use that data that we're taking and assessing us to figure out where we need to pivot, where we need to go, or where we need to change off that with regard to that direction. So the data that's out there certainly is not exactly where we want to be, but we're certainly not there movement sometimes and better communicating that there are some steps, there are some improvements. You know, I learned this at a conference that I went with regard to some data in terms of where our students are proficient. For instance, and this is not a measure, this is an example. So within a red square, and you're trying to get to, you know, to the top of the red square and be proficient, and perhaps you're below that. So there are metrics within that. And so there are the improvements within that, within those metrics, you know. So communicate with that a lot better. And then as we're moving in between those places, how do we get to, you know, how do we measure that and move and pivot and improve as necessary to make sure we're getting to perfection, to proficient, and knowing that that's an improvement. Equity is a huge part of that. So using data and metrics and information, not as a weapon, but as a tool, the move is where we need to do, make sure we're adjusting what we need to do and meeting the kids where they are.
All right. Wendy, you're breaking up just a little bit on the audio, so maybe if you could just move a little bit closer.
Okay.
That would, we wouldn't have the breakup.
Okay.
And you mentioned, you know, some places where we don't want to be. And obviously, when we look at the test scores, 45 proficiency, 45% proficiency, say that three times fast in math, and 56% in English. And then, you know, obviously piled on that, the learning gap, the achievement gap, whatever you want to call it. What has the board done specifically to address that issue?
Yeah, it's first of all, understanding that that is not the only indicator of success or moving it certainly is a large indicator in terms of that. But what is needed really to move it? What does it take to move that? There may be successes within that and having moved that big number. So, you know, understanding and meeting our students where they are, meeting them where they are, and that may mean more family support. That may mean, you know, you know, our English learner students, what more they need to make sure that we're transferring them over, they're reclassifying, you know, reclassifying a much faster. So there's so many variables that are, that are, need to be included in only looking at those numbers. And I really know that we will get there, but we cannot get there without looking through an equitable lens to make sure, meeting our kids where they are and helping adjust and, you know, to make sure what do they need in terms of being, having a good foundation. And I think for me, it also goes back to early care. The more we're early able to get at our kids a lot earlier, then you'll see those metrics become stronger. Is it family that we need to support early in the times? Is it students? Is it books? What are the resources that are necessarily need to make sure that when they reach there, they're already there ahead of that piece? And so those are integral parts of me. And again, those numbers are certainly not where we want them to be. We want everybody to be proficient, but that's not our stop goal. That's a proficient, but we certainly want to be beyond that. And when we break it down, what is it that we need to ensure that everyone is getting there? That means we're gonna need to meet students where they are, meet families where they are, and be okay with starting there and know that that's a starting point that we're always looking at and always adjusting what we need to. I think, you know, as we started to move the board head to hire, you know, we had a new superintendent that we had to hire. So when I was part of that, that, you know, when being a part of that was, you know, what a great opportunity to, how do we look at the person that's coming in to move us to those next levels of, this person doesn't understand, you know, how important it is to have early learning and being parent engagement in school, you know, sustainability to make sure that the teachers and the students have the resources they need to meet those metrics of being proficient and beyond, and make sure that we have strong parent and student engagement. The board has made a lot of changes and movement toward that. And it's not, you know, four years is seemingly like a lot of time, but it, you know, it takes a little bit longer. And so that's why it's important for me to, you know, run for reelection.
Well, let's dig in on that a little bit, because you've used some really important words, looking at this with an equitable lens and meeting students where they are. This goes to the whole theory and approach of equity. And I think a lot of people hear the word equity, and they think, oh, that's the same as equality. But it's not. It's a different approach. Can you, can you explain what you mean by equity and how it's different than equality?
Yes, you know, equality says we all have the same thing, right? We're right there, you know? If that was the case, then we would be there and we wouldn't be talking about equality and wants it. But because the resources, support, environments, and cultures, and different things that have happened along the way, we've not had the equity, meaning that meeting folks, they may need something, like for instance, you know, families that are coming in and kids who might need glasses, who kids might need different things to make sure that it's equitable in order for them to have a good starting place. And what do they need in an equitable way means that you're meeting people where they are and giving them the resources they need to get to that level of playing. Then we can be equal because we put in the necessary resources or additional needs and supports that need to happen for our students and family to be on an equal plane. And, you know, equity is hard, because as soon as, I think the word equity, people tend to hunker down in their own resources and said, that means you're gonna take something away from my student. When in fact, it's really giving, it's saying, I recognize where your students are, how do we keep our students, you know, achievers and high achievers, and they're in the middle, that's not quite engaged. How do we do that to ensure that everybody's needs are being met at all times? We're taking into consideration how they're being met to make sure that we're all being able to be in a good starting place and foundation and continue to do that. Sometimes there will be supports that need on a certain level, right? There may be supports that need all the time. This opportunity, we have this long leadership that any parents or students will have in school. You will have it from kindergarten all the way to 13 years. Here's an opportunity to make sure that we're meeting those needs in each kind of, it can be generational, that includes, so you have an opportunity, it's an opportunity for schools to be that anchor, which they are, in our communities to really move us forward, you know, as, but we're looking at equitable, who needs what, and make sure that we are giving them what they need when they get to the school, how we work in outside in the community, how we work in with First Five to better prepare folks to be ready.
All right. You mentioned the new superintendent, Hilda Moltenato, who started over the summer. Mr. Matsuoko left a year before his contract was up. You were, you were seen really as a close ally of his and on a number of, you know, kind of high-profile controversies, the Ad Baron situation, the Mad Academy, Peabody Stadium, and so on. How would you assess his performance as a superintendent? What grade would you give Kerry Matsuoko?
I would give a B. So let me just step back in terms of that. So not having, you know, hired the superintendent, so what would I be looking at a superintendent? So things I would look at a superintendent are different, right, than Kerry, because we came in and Kerry was there. And so maybe there are certain things that that board that had hired him, we'll look at differently. And I also think this board was learning and getting its feeding and getting its footing. And as we were getting our footing, there was a lot of slippery things that were going on. So learning how to work as a board, learning how to do all those things in the midst of all that was going on, when we didn't really have as a board an established relationship with the community, and perhaps they were wondering if we were trusting these and, you know, dealing with issues that were before us. So I feel we did the best that we could. Certainly, there are always things that you might want to improve, and one of them might be in terms of, you know, communication. How can we communicate a little bit more transparently? How do we do that? Let me answer your second question about being an ally of the superintendent. I, as an executive director for First Five, have a relationship with my commission, and it's important to have them to support me who have hired me to be, to carry out the vision of First Five. We hire our superintendents to carry out that vision. So it's important to support them, be able to guide them, maybe give feedback, and be able to navigate through in terms of, they kind of know that you have the support of the board. They can't do the work if they kind of wonder if the board is gonna do this or do that in terms of that. So I think for me, in terms of that, it's establishing relationships and you get to know folks. So in your middle of the crisis, you're trusting what someone is doing, and you're guiding that if you need to, and you have a relationship that often, you might need to, you know, make different, may have to go different directions. But being able to receive that and accept that. And that conversation has happened. I've already said that enough in our meetings, but as a general, in supporting our leadership, we're hiring them. And for me, hiring, part of the hiring that I was looking for, you know, in Hilton, I think we have great, have a great choice in her. As you know, it was five votes, it was really, and I think every board member has talked about, you feel this is the leader for this time, with the things that we're going through. Who knew? The things that we were looking for is really the strength that we're gonna need right in the middle of this crisis in terms of someone who understands the equity, who understands the needs, who had done their homework on this district, and how they're gonna need to, what we, the things we're gonna need to navigate through in terms of the understanding, this link, aligning for me, early learning, and making sure that we have fiscal viability to move forward. How do you bring folks together in the midst of a crisis, in the midst of change? And I think she's doing an awesome job to do that, and I'm, I feel very privileged to be in part of that search.
All right, just to close on that question. So, I mean, understanding the recent history of the board, I think it is important to know that the three incumbents came on at a time, Matsuoko was already there. You didn't hire him. The previous board had hired him, and you kind of inherited him. Looking back on the last four years, is there anything you look, any votes or any policies that you look at with regret and say, gee, you know, if I knew then what I knew now, I would have done something differently?
You know, hindsight is always 2020, but as far as my votes and conversations and understanding, I wouldn't change that. It may be a way in terms of how it's communicated and, you know, being heavy, you know, understanding and being able to communicate, you know, what this board is, you know, in position, making, again, making about decisions and issues that were before, that came before us, and trying to learn how do we work with each other, how do we work with the superintendent? What does it mean to work in a school district, you know, and all the laws and things that have come differently? And so being, you know, in the seat is so much different than looking at the seat. You know, so that certainly has, you know, for me, you know, now going forth and seeking reelection, I'm much smarter, you know, and much more informed about what it means to do, what questions, you know, to ask. And I don't think I would ask different questions. I was asking the questions and making decisions based on the things that were in front of me and making sure that my values were still there and my integrity was there. And those discussions happened, as I said, you know, three, almost four years ago. And yeah, just learning different things and feel much more steady in terms of being informed, you know, being informed and better prepared in a way, because this experience is exactly what it is. It's experience. And like I said, being in the seat is different from looking at it, you know, looking at it and all the things that, you know, that have to, you have to learn and the time and the commitment that is taken, even as you're, you know, navigating and finding your relationships with your board members. And so that has prepared me in a way for reelection that I couldn't have even, I couldn't have asked or planned for better.
Yeah. Let me, let me ask you about a couple of other controversies. And I think they, you know, they kind of go to the, to the equity issue, and that's, you know, Just Communities and Ethnic Studies. And as you know, you know, there's been a lot of public comment about it. A couple of the people who are running against you raise those as reasons to be running as the criteria for their candidacy. Let me, let me just take a whack at this. It seems to me that issue, that programs like Just Communities, Ethnic Studies are based on a, on a theory that racism is ingrained in the fabric of our society. And that's different than sort of classic liberalism, which, you know, sees individual liberty and equality before the law. So that when people say, well, you know, there's white supremacy or, or white people are oppressed, they feel like you're calling me a racist personally, when it's really a structural systemic issue. Is that, does that fairly describe what some of these controversies and conflicts we've had over issues like Just Communities and Ethnic Studies?
You know, I, as I think about that question, and things that I've talked about in terms of, I, you know, as a person of color, a student of color, now a woman of color, a leader of color, that has been the experience in terms of the racism that is there. Subtle, not so subtle. And again, it goes to when people are uncomfortable having to move or to look at others, you know, other sides, you begin to dig in and say, not me. We know this country, there's been inequality and racism since forever. It continues to do that. We're just having, you know, the voices have been raised. You look at all the voting rights. African Americans had to lose their life, continue even at this point, losing their life for a right that is supposed to be a right for every American, yet it wasn't given. So yeah, there's racism. Yes, that's there. Let's not shy away from that, you know? Education is activism. Education is supposed to be the great equalizer. It could only be the equalizer when we're looking at everybody should be at the starting point and be able to get that. So we were not there, and this is an opportunity to have open and honest conversations. And that's what the implicit bias, you know, training in terms of Just Communities is, they've been there for a long time, and I've wanted to, you know, essentially, you know, the structures that, as you meant, as you mentioned, it's important to be a part of system that's going on, looking at your diverse students that are coming in from diverse backgrounds and the richness of that. And so you have those conversations. But if you are a person of color who's never seen or heard or read anything about who you are, you're only defined by one part of this country. And so it's important, it's important through implicit bias training to take a look at yourself, to look through the eyes of others. It's really important to be able to do that. Ethnic Studies gives you the opportunity to hear about the contradictions of others and those of us who look in a book and have never read that, you know? And to say that how inspiring that can be. I took Ethnic Studies when I was in Texas, and I, in Texas, no less, and really is one of the most candid conversations in terms of really seeing others beyond what you've been taught, right, and what you've been raised through. And understand, just for a moment, even if it's in that moment, it needs to be a part of everything that we do, walk in other shoes, even the other side who may not get it. And I guess, you may not get it. You might surely say, what if these things were happening to me? How would I do it? So let's not shy away from that. We know that, you know, there's inequities here. We have some of those inequities in our school. We understand it. So let's just call it what it is in terms of, there are some racial systemic issues that we need to all face if we really say, you know, in order to form a more perfect union, to be able to do that. This is all perfect, you know, for all. And so if all doesn't include folks that don't look like you, we have not achieved that yet.
All right. Let me, I want to read you two sentences from the course description of English nine Ethnic Studies. It says, "Students in these courses will study race through the intersections of social identities such as ethnicity, culture, gender, sexuality, ability, language, immigrant status, and class. They will analyze indigeneity, aspects of decolonization, white supremacy, oppression and privilege, and work towards empowering themselves as anti-racist leaders who engage in social justice activism." Do you, are you comfortable with the goal of the course being training people to engage in social justice activism? Do you think that that's a point of conflict for some people who say, well, wait a minute, that's, I didn't know that's what they were trying to do?
Um, yeah, there are words, and, you know, I think anti-racism, if you say, am I racist? Am I, have I have anti-racist, do I have racist thoughts? Do I have, do I think differently based on my experience? I'm made, made indeed. But I think it's important that those things that you just listed, they start a conversation. We were just listening to some students just in our last, there was an Ethnic Studies forum, and I listened to these students, how they just said, this was an opportunity for me to get to see me in a different light and help me have conversation with others, see myself differently, empower me to speak, you know, speak up when I see things that are, that are not right, that are not right for someone who's different from me, and how we can together make this change in order to form a more perfect union. You've got to have these difficult conversations, and it's not about making you feel uncomfortable. Yes, you will be uncomfortable. It's because all folks in America, all Americans do not have equal rights. They don't. And so how we work together. So yes, those are things. And you can look at all those things and you can pick them apart, but it's really about making sure that we have a real conversation, a respectable conversation. It also creates a space where you're adhering and maybe learning something for the first time, that you're listening for others' perspectives. And sometimes when you're listening to others' perspective, there are things that you learn. And I think it's important to be able to hear, just because someone disagrees with you or have a different perspective, at least in that space, you're able to share that perspective. And you can continue on, you know, everybody's entitled to their opinion. Then are we all thinking about it that brings us to the common good of all and making sure that our students are prepared for a world that's yet to be created? They're gonna create these things. We're gonna be, we're still creating a world where we have still the right equity and race. We don't, we don't, we don't move forward without it.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's, you know, I appreciate you digging in on that. It's, it's an important conversation to have. We're running out of time, so I need to ask you quickly, what's on everybody's mind, obviously, is one of the schools classrooms gonna reopen face-to-face learning? My sense, listening to the board, is that it's gonna be January at the earliest. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
We might be totally, you know, opening in person next, as a goal. We're trying to get to the goal standard, making sure that when we get to all of us being, you know, in person, like that we're there safely and we're healthy and we're working in conjunction with our public health. So it's always been the goal to get back to in-person learning, but it has to be in a safe and healthy manner. We have to look at the metric, tell us what we can and cannot do. As you know, the board has been being updated, you know, every time that we're meeting as a board, but also through communication out from superintendent and administrators, you know, on a weekly basis, daily basis sometimes in terms of how we're moving, how we're interconnected with the public health department to make sure that we get our kids back safely. So we're moving in cohorts, in small cohorts. First, our teachers are back in their classroom, and how do we take care of their children while they're on site? And so we're moving slowly, as we need to learn and pivot, you know, to make any adjustments that may be necessary to ultimately get us to that goal place of everyone back in person. And we know that we understand that, how critical that is to the social emotional health of all of us, certainly our students, and certainly, you know, the inequities, the things that were highlighted, that were, you know, illuminated actually through COVID. They weren't, they didn't come as a result of COVID. They were highlighted in the midst of COVID, right? Things that were already there. And so taking those into consideration, so moving and moving forward consistently, stay in the courts, making sure we're using the metrics, the science, the data to keep us safe. So when we get there, we don't have to shut down again how critical, how dramatic that could be with regards to that. So I can appreciate Ms. Moltenato's leadership and Katniss' leadership and administrative and working so closely with other community partners, you know, to make sure that we're getting our students back safely in person. getting our state, our students back safely in person. We understand how critical and how much of an anchor that the schools are. And we realized that when we all had to shut down, I think we just, but schools, you know, kids are gonna be in school and we're good. But when we all had to shut down, that was really illuminated, like what really happens and how critical the school is to the, to, to the economy, make sure
Oops.
Parents are working, to the community, make sure that it's strong. So we're gonna keep doing it in person and hopefully we're gonna do that December, January, but not sooner than it's safe to do so.
Okay. All right. And then of course, you know, the problem from an educational perspective there is learning loss. We all know kids even over the summer, you know, lose two or three months of what they've learned the year before. And, you know, a lot of people are, you know, a learning loss catastrophe is what the New York Times called it. Are you, do you feel comfortable that the district is doing everything it can to address that issue through the online learning systems?
I think the goal is always that the district is to make sure that we're reducing any learning gaps and achievement, that that's always the goal. So to make sure that our students are prepared to move to that next goal. You know, when we had to shut down in March, it was like, wow, we have to shut down and we have to now do, you know, online learning. And we were not prepared in a way that, you know, I think most districts were having that same issue, gosh, we gotta do this. So certainly, and now, just get, making sure that all the students have the things that they need, we're doing much better than we were in March. We continue to look at and improve and understanding how the inequities that are, that are there would create a larger learning wise loss. But that is the foremost in Superintendent Malanato's mind, making sure that we're addressing the students in an equitable way, meeting their needs there, making sure they have hotspots, making sure they have the IPass that they need to do their work and working with the teachers, getting their input, how, you know, making sure that we're staying in touch, you know, with our students on the daily, how are they doing this? And rethinking and pivoting as necessary to minimize the learning loss, you know, with, that has been brought, you know, that has been brought on even estimate, you know, estimate by COVID. And so as we continue to do that, yes, of course, learning loss is there. And so I would assume that by the time we're getting back in person, we understand what do we need to do to stay caught up? And I think in terms of creative ways, I appreciate the teachers who were there and the students or, you know, being open and parents are supporting them to get there. And so we can minimize that. And then, you know, when we're back in person, what are the things we make sure that we support them and recognize where we are in, in terms of this, this, this distance learning? Should, should something ever happen like this again, we're ready and we're prepared to make sure that there's minimal learning loss, new, any time that we're not in-person learning.
All right. Wendy Sims Moten, we thank you so much for taking the time. I know your schedule is crazy these days, but we really appreciate you talking to our viewers and we'll see you on the campaign trail on Zoom, I guess. I don't know.